I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, and welcome everyone to the July the fifth, two thousand and sixteen, uh, Bryan City Council meeting. First on the agenda is approval of minutes of January twentieth, regular meeting, and then also a special executive session meeting on June the twenty seventh. So council, you've been presented with those minutes. Have you noticed, or are there any additional corrections need to be made at this time?
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes. Okay. Next we have, uh, on the agenda, hearing of public concerns. That is for anyone can address council that is not on the agenda. And it's my understanding, Mr. Vashaw would like to, uh, address council. Please come forward.
Thank you, my name's Kirk Vashaw, I'm here on behalf of the Williams County Airport boosters and the other folks that use the airport. Wanted to bring to the council's attention a, uh, safety issue that we have out at the airport that, uh, we'd like to see addressed. I think you all are very familiar with the airport, it's a great asset to our community. It's got one of the longest runways, uh, in the area outside of Fort Wayne and Toledo. There's about two hundred operations per, uh, week at the airport. About fifty of those are outside aircraft that come in to either visit, uh, that could be private aviation, but certainly we've got a lot of our businesses that use the airport, either their customers are visiting or their suppliers visit. The hospital has used it before and certainly helicopters like Liflight and Prometica, uh, use it for a refueling, uh, station. There was a study that was done last year, uh, by, I think it was the High Department of Aviation, but it said that the Williams County Airport alone produces one point five million dollars in economic benefit to our community. So it really does add up, and it's a great resource, and we've got a new runway out there, so we're very, very excited about that. But one of the safety issues that we do have is there's a goose problem at the east end of the, um, of the airport, which is runway seven, and the problem is out by the retention pond. As you know, geese, Canadian geese are big, they can bring down jetliners, that's what happened in, uh, the Miracle on the Hudson, as they call it, there's been some other fatal accidents as well. They are large birds. That particular phase of flight is always very dangerous, takeoff and landing, because the planes are going slow. Uh, you can have, a goose can come into an engine and cause it to go out, it can come through the windshield, it can do damage to the, the plane. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we did have an accident this spring where on takeoff, one of our private aviation planes did hit a goose that came flying out of the, uh, of the grass. It, it hit the wing, they were able to stop the airplane in time before it took off. Did, I think about five thousand dollars worth of damage, but it was an accident averted, so fortunately, a serious accident averted. In the fall, when the geese migrate, there can be a thousand geese out there. It's, we're really most concerned around the fall period, although throughout the, uh, the year as well, there is definitely a population of geese that live there, and then once the migration begins, you just get a thousand of them, and it's right in the flight path. So there are a variety of ways to deal with this problem. Um, I, I'm not here to make a recommendation of what's the best way, but just ask the city council, uh, take this safety issue, uh, seriously and develop a plan to help us, uh, keep the airport and our community safe. Do you have any questions?
Have you, you say you've researched, uh, do you have a couple examples? I know this has been an issue for several times, it's either been the geese, or it's been the deer, or whatever, you know?
Yeah, we've called the deer before, and that's, that's, that's been effective. There are some, why, it, it depends what the kind of the community wants. Uh, in my opinion, as someone who's jogged out there and used the bike path, I think there's way too many geese out there, the goose droppings, I mean, it's really unsanitary, I, um, there's too many, uh, geese there. But this is a man-made problem, because that retention pond is not supposed to have water in it. It's only supposed to have water in it when it floods, um, and I, I think the criteria is it's supposed to have water for seven days or something like that, but there's always water in there, because, I'm not sure the full backstory, but at some point, uh, was decided to, let's keep some water in it, so we can have a, a nice area for people to bike. But that's the exact reason not to put water in it. Uh, so it is a man-made problem that the city did kind of create, and now I just think we need to find ways to, um, to solve it. There's some wiring systems that you can put up that kind of keep the birds from flying in. There, you can shake the eggs, obviously you can hunt them, but that's a lot to hunt, so I don't know if that's the best solution or not. But, um, so it is, again, I'm not here to, I don't know what the right answer is. But I know there's a variety of ways to deal with it, and just ask that, that we look at those issues.
Why, why have we put water in there?
That's, uh, you, you might wanna sit down here a second, we have a little slide showing, bring you up to speed.
Oh.
Just sit down a second here, I can get this thing to go here. Um, this, this thing, I, I, after you had called, I looked up today and I found a, a, in the files back there, a desk, and was able to, with some of my helpers, able to get this thing to work, see what happens here. This was, uh, uh, conservation work, uh, back in, uh, a combination of the Soil/Water Conservation District, a multi-county joint, uh, county commissioners program. And, uh, they had a program nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-eight, two thousand. Uh, it started with a single county petition by Williams County, and then it went to Defiance County, they became concerned. And then, uh, formal, uh, petition was filed with the Joint, uh, Water District. And then, uh, private engineer was hired, and then the Joint Board held informational meetings. Engineers' plans were completed, and the public hearing was April fourth. And plans went out for bid and so forth, and the final assessment signed on July fifth. Uh, construction of the project then started, and the project dedication is there. Uh, this is the, uh, beginning petitions of the people that first signed for that in Williams County that wanted that to be in there. Uh, Williams County had that many parcels, and you see how many the city of Bryan had. And then Defiance County joined in, and it kind of gives you the mileage and so forth of that area. Uh, that tells you where the water comes from, the water maps, from the Prairie Creek, Ground Creek, where the, the white is the retention pond and, and so forth, along that area. Yeah, the need for the program was the big flood that happened and inadequate drainage and, uh, stream maintenance. Um, I, I, I think that, was that eighty-six or?
Nineties.
Ninety-six, May seventeenth, when they had the flooding, I think that's on Noble Drive, cars down near the Trinity Church down in that area. Here's some more pictures of that. Uh, there's our re, our, our wastewater plant, and that, all our digesters were completely over flooded there. And then people started asking what solutions can be made on this. And, uh, there's some of the flooding that, that took place, uh, all over. The key projects, point four-three acres, sixty-six million gallons, wetland bases. And, uh, they tried to, they wanted to divert the peak flow of water to reduce runoff, and they want to, uh, preserve the natural habitat. The results, uh, stream reconstruction, you see, that's, uh, I think that's pretty close to where we are right in here now, over by the lawyer's office back through there. There, that's before, that's what the creeks look like, that's during. And that's after, it's gotten into winter time. And that's before with the logs, that's during, and that's after. And that's before, that is, that's right out here, uh, right in front of the sheriff's office, during. And that's after, what it looks like. And that results is what Kurt is talking about, is wet, is wetland pond, you see? And, uh, the wetland wildlife habitat, and you can see the, how they laid it out. And where the filters, water control, different things like that are in there. Uh, before, that's what it looked like before they ever dug the pond. There is during the digging of the pond, and that's what it looks like now, or with, with water, after. Uh, there, there it shows the, the pond and the, our, um, wastewater plant. Some more drawings there. But this is, this is the thing that some people were questioning early on, and that's where they built that weir, or whatever they call that across there, and some thought that, uh, that that would have a way that that water could get out and flow down the creeks and out, uh, but, uh, it didn't, it didn't happen. It became a, uh, what, a waterland or a water preserve afterwards. And there you see the ducks and geese starting to come right at that point. And there, there's water, a- as you see it sometimes after a rain, never does really go down. There's some more. That's, uh, after a heavy rain. Results, that's what the streams look like now. Some more of that. I didn't even realize, like, we had this back here in the file, and I found it this morning and dug it out, thought maybe this might help a little bit. And took out the logs and... Uh, Bryan, City of Bryan, it was one point seven million that they paid for, uh, ODNR, Ohio Department of Natural Resources. I think that's when it became a, a, um, a place where wildlife could be, they put a million dollars in. And they had, uh, a couple more, State of Ohio, uh, contributed out of the State of Ohio capital budget. Total cost of the program was about four point five million dollars, according to this slide that we had. And they estimated that was a one point seven savings over what they originally had proposed that to be. And there's the, the, um, engineering, they received the excellent award for the project. We have that plaque back there at the bag there, that's out of Meyer. And, uh, it developed a natural wetland habitat for wildlife and vegetation. But there's the problem starting. And this, Kurt, could be an answer. Uh, I read, I, it's either in the Toledo area or someplace, that shooting loud guns or something is not chasing the geese around, but they have, uh, uh, dogs that come in a couple of times a week and run the, run the geese off. That could be an answer.
I read that too.
Did you? I read that article.
How places have done it?
Is, they're effective, huh, doing that?
The Border Collies, they have, somebody has trained ones that...
Now, the county commissioners are responsible, the, the board and the county, for the maintenance and so forth for the ditch, and they do take care of that out there, we have to get on the group a little bit, the, the joint group, and they do take care of that. But they don't care, take care of our geese problem. You see the dedication, I think the top might be Lynn Watchman, and the lower one right might be Buwer. And you see the commissioners in there that was involved in that ninety-nine, ninety-eight time, and all those people.
Mayor Uncle's in that one picture?
Yeah, yeah. That doesn't solve our problem with geese. Now, we've had the game warden here, I don't know, Dick, if you wanna, Dick has been shooting geese out there, but they, they don't let us shoot many.
That's the problem.
You wanna?
I do want to shoot it out there.
You wanna come up to?
Probably one of the only goose hunters out here. And I kill a lot of geese, but unfortunately, with that detention pond being, or being a roost pond, you know, and those geese have a tendency...
Could we get him to come up here?
Yeah, come up to.
So the people can hear you? Cause I couldn't understand either, what you were saying.
Go ahead, Dick, yeah.
But unfortunately, with the, uh, retention pond being the roost pond, you know, you, they're gonna be there. You can't eliminate them. And unfortunately, with the state, they only allow me to shoot so many geese, which we have way too many geese. The limits need to be increased, but that's another story. Now, when the sewage treatment plant, when they eliminated the holding ponds, that helped a lot, because those geese would leave there and go right straight down the runway. And now, with being the retention pond, they still go there, but they take a different route. Geese won't stay in there. I mean, you got deer there, which I'm taking care of that also. But it's gonna be a never-ending problem. Number one, there's too many geese in the state, period, way too many. The state has got to allow us to kill more geese. But we're working on things slowly but surely, you know? The dog situation, I, I got a kick out of that, I thought that was really cool, but unfortunately, I don't have the time to train a dog or I'd do it, but, uh...
I think they have professional group, the way it sounded in the blade or wherever I read that, it's a professional group that come out and, that have the dogs and run through there a couple of times a week or something like that.
Right.
And they, they chase them out. Now, Rick Holmeyer has his dog.
Correct.
And Rick lets his run out there.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the problems we have out there is, part of it's in the, in the county, and part of it's in the city, and they don't have any shooting in the city, and also, if they shoot toward it, they're shooting right toward our wastewater plant, if they're coming out, and they're also shooting toward Titan Tire. So, uh, you've got that situation to deal with.
Now, you're regulated as to what direction you shoot. You, you, you get down low?
Uh, yeah.
Below the, the...
Well, I, I do, I do it different ways.
Uh-huh.
But, um, yeah, it's all safe, cause I'm big on safety. I mean, that's why we had discussed having some shoots out there during regular season, but I don't think safety-wise, you could keep that in check.
Yeah.
You gotta, not that I'm the smartest guy in the world, but I got enough smarts to know which way I can shoot now, I can shoot. I use special bullets that explode, disintegrate, they don't ricochet, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
Got it, that stuff you have to take and, you know?
See, I, I think our public is not aware about that sort of thing. I've had calls on, that we were concerned about people shooting out there, and, uh, I said, well, they, they're regulated as to how they can do that.
Correct.
We've had more calls, Keith, of people wanting to shoot out there, but the safety was always, has been a concern.
Yes.
And, uh, we, and they said, well, why, Dick, you know, uh, and the safety has been there, but, uh, but this new game warden, we have a new game warden now, and he's more stringent, the other one would allow you, I think, to take a few more, but, but this one, you, you're only gonna be able to take two a day.
Correct.
So we probably should maybe schedule different days and different peo-, I don't know if we're gonna make any progress that way.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's the answer.
And he and I are working on some things, trying to figure out how we can increase during the regular season.
Dick, if you, if you're allowed a, uh, two a day?
Three, actually.
Three a day, okay, then, like, if we would find some other people, you know, and come out during shifts or whatever, maybe have three or four people?
That's want waste, you know, that's against the law, so, um, yeah, I mean, but that's something you could work on.
Yeah, okay, well, yeah.
Only thing, if there's thousands of these and you do twelve a day, that's not, that's gonna be an awful long time to get it under control.
It only takes one bird to bring a plane down.
Yeah.
Yeah. See, I, last year, I keep track of my numbers, of course I have to for the state, but, uh, I killed a hundred and seven geese myself during my permits from the state to shoot there in regular season. And I don't even put a den in them. Of course, you're right, during, you know, late November, end of December, you get the migrators that come down there. We'll have two thousand geese out there.
Yeah.
And that's way too many geese.
Especially for that airport right there.
Out at the ice rink, they have a, some kind of a sound system where it sounds like a hawk or something to keep the birds out of the ice rink, to keep them from nesting. Would anything along those lines work, or geese aren't afraid?
Tell you, when it comes to stuff like that, your boom cannons, your propane?
Yeah.
These geese are smart. They get used to that in a heartbeat.
Okay.
Uh, I tell everybody in conversation, the only way you get rid of them, get them off of there, is to shoot them off. They know what that is.
Geese, if, I, I guess I'm thinking in terms of the dogs, if we would chase them off over time, would they relocate, or, or they wouldn't do something?
Uh, if, if they're harassed enough, they'll leave. They'll go, they'll go to Clover Lake and roost.
There's so many farm ponds all around.
Yeah. But unfortunately, uh, through the years, the geese, the migrating geese, used to go right by here. I mean, they used to go down to Kentucky, Tennessee, Georgia. These Canadian geese will not go any farther than absolutely have to. When it freezes up here, they'll still hang around because of the creek stays open. But when it gets real tough, they'll just go to Defiance, to the river. You get two days of warm-up, they're right back. So that's, that's all changed. And unfortunately, they're just piling up here in the state.
You know, Kurt mentioned about, uh, it'll, that it was designed without water or something? That if you didn't have the water there, you wouldn't have the geese. Uh, is it because it's a wetland designation, we couldn't put in a pumping system to keep the water down, is that right?
My understanding that, that did not happen, I mean, that it's geared as a wetland, and they put money in.
That's why it was, it was designed for that.
Correct, cause I remember in the beginning in that process, when I worked for the Street Department, I worked with Todd Roth.
Yeah.
And I got involved in that project. That originally was not supposed to hold any water.
Mm-hmm, that's what Kurt was referring to.
And then, once you take...
Once they put their money in.
The state money and the DNR from the jungle fund and the DNR, you kinda have to do it their way. You go by their design.
Yeah.
But is it possible that the airport authority didn't know that we were then going to make it a retention pond, and that's where the wires got crossed? Cause I think the issue is for, for, for you guys, I mean, I think maybe you didn't know that it was gonna be a retention pond. And I don't know, if, neither of you were in town in nineteen ninety-six, like you and I, so, we're gonna have to rely on the rest of you in the room.
I wasn't involved either.
Yeah.
Well, back then, the county didn't, didn't have an airport, that was true.
That's true, that's true.
Do you think?
You need to pound on the state and tell them that we need to let these guys kill more geese.
Do you think, Dick, the dogs would work if we were to go that route? If we did it often enough?
Uh, as far as on the airport?
Well, just to, to get the geese out of there, so it makes it safe for the airport, for the planes.
Yeah, and I know there's, uh, a hunting partner I had, he liked to run his dogs down there. And of course, then people threw a fit because they weren't on a leash. And I encourage people, let their labs go down there and swim and chase them.
Yeah.
Now, I'm wondering if we're talking two different places, because one of our bigger problems now is right behind the wastewater plant, where that new holding pond is.
That's where I'm thinking you're talking about.
That's where the, yes, uh, I, I, I don't think there has as many geese on the retention pond as in that tall grass back in there. And I know there was a, if you put a fox or something out there, uh, Alan Dean put his out there.
Oh, you're talking about on the, on the east side of the creek?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
And they put the, the fox, and pretty soon they would jump right over the top of it.
Right, yeah.
And then last year, somebody had something around Dublin, and it was, uh, something that would flow around in the pond and glow a, a red light. And, and, and they're costly, but it would take quite a few to flow around, but that's keeping them out around Dublin, around their, their big golf courses and so forth down there.
Well, I guess that was, that was my concern, I wanna make sure we're talking about the right thing. Now, Kurt, you're talking about the retention pond, where's that, has the, the walkway going around it? Are you talking about the?
The one that we saw on presentation.
Okay, because I was, the other one that sits there, that, when you said water, that's not supposed to hold water. That's only of an overflow, so it's not, it's not from that. It's not, the geese aren't coming out of that one.
But they're hanging out right there.
Yeah, they're starting to hang out.
They are hanging out in droves out there.
Yeah, so that's my, yeah.
But Kurt, it's right across the road, I mean, it's all the same general vicinity.
Yeah.
So...
And I have another plan in place for this fall, which I need to run by the mayor and council, that I think would help.
Maybe we could get the game warden back in here, and if it is, you know, the concern with the, it's...
Right.
It's, uh, if that plane goes down, or, and, and it's gonna head right for the, the takeoff, the Walmart and the Chief and everything right out in that area. Bruce, oh, I know, I know what's coming here, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, when things started calling the geese, they started migrating to the pond that's behind my house.
Right.
And I've got geese in my backyard every single day, and I've gotta chase them off and harass them, and they keep coming back, defecating in the yard, I get grandkids running in the yard, I've gotta constantly pick up the goose droppings to keep my backyard clean. And I've got close to sixty to seventy geese on that pond. And I'm in the flight path for the airport, so the geese are in, the geese are out, constantly. So it's not just the detention pond, and it's not the overflow area, and it's Clover Lake, and it's also the pond. That's all.
The Wal, the Walmart pond and...
That behind Meadow Brook, I think.
Yep.
Starbs.
Behind Meadow Brook.
Cause there never used to be quite that many that hung around starbs.
When you started shooting them that, that weekend?
Yeah.
I got about a hundred of them.
Yeah.
They all migrated.
And you've wanted to shake his hand ever since, haven't you?
Goose is in the pond.
I do think we need to, to take a look at it, because...
Take care of them during regular season.
I mean, we have business owners that are using that airport and friends and neighbors, and I certainly wanna, wouldn't want to ignore the problem and then become bigger than it.
Would the airport authority have more power to get it, to, uh, get in touch with the DNR to?
I think so.
We had a meeting, our initial meeting, and it's been maybe two, three, were you on concert yet? And we had a, here, we had the airport authority, we had the game warden came in, and that's when we started the shooting and the egg shaking and different things like that. And then, then we had people concerned, hey, we go out there and walk, but the way we have done it there has been no complaints of shooting and people walking because of your safety measures. But if you increase the number of shooters out there...
Then you also have the issue of the eagles.
Oh, yes, that, that, that's complicated, the eagle's nest.
Which is on the airport area, correct?
Yes.
It's, it's near the airport, I mean, the eagles tend to stay put, it's only two of them, so, they're, they're okay.
They're in that woods, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then I, I take care of the deer, and I'm only, I gotta stay so far away, and I don't wanna... How do I say this, without incriminating myself? I don't wanna harass the eagles at all. You know, I don't wanna upset them, because then I, there's a lot of people that watch those eagles, and, and I'm not gonna do anything to hurt them. But I don't wanna disrupt their...
Their pattern.
Cause the raptor thing is, mm, gotta be careful.
Well, we can, we can call more people in and talk to airport authority and get the ODNR in here and see if anything happens, and, uh, the be, one of the better things is this dog thing that I've been seeing here lately, and whether that's working out down around Toledo. Now, whether that's working at Talaran Toledo in that area, I believe that's where I read that. Yeah, go ahead.
The, uh, the FAA is, uh, gonna require the airport, and, and I can't remember the exact year, it's, it's in the, the long-term plan to do a wildlife study and it's gonna be in a couple of years. I think it's best to try to address the issue before that study is done, before there's some mandated, hey, you, that you have to do it. I think we should be kinda proactive in, in figuring out the best way to, to deal with it. I know the dogs do work, except the geese go somewhere. So, um, I, I lived in a city that they did that and it was great for that city, but they moved over to the city next door, so, uh, that's the down, the down, the downside of that. But I think, uh, getting with the DNR and, and revisiting the issue, what did we learn from the last time we did it? It definitely helped last time. It, it, it did, but it just wasn't enough, or we didn't keep the sustained efforts up. And I think we should probably.
It's got the head of us, so keep, take, keep.
Yeah, they keep, they keep coming.
Yeah.
They keep coming. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you, Kurt.
And thank you, Mr. Long.
Yes.
It's handy to have you here tonight.
Bruce, don't you have a dog?
Doesn't Dee want a border collie for Christmas? Oh.
And an owl won't work, huh?
No.
For a while, but like they said.
Maybe a real.
They become, they become very learned and it's about, you move it and it's about, you gotta come up with new ways to do it and it's constantly.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have retire, retirement in the clerk treasurer's office and I think Lori, you have anything to add?
I regretfully request that council approve the retirement of account clerk three K running from the clerk treasurer's office. Kay would like to retire effective October thirty-first of this year after twenty-eight years of service to the city of Bryan and prior meaningful experience before that. Um, she wanted me to add, um, that she will miss her involvement with her coworkers in management. She's gonna be a great loss in our office.
Okay. Counsel, your wishes.
I move that we accept it with regret and a gratitude, big gratitude to her for all she's done.
I'll second that.
Keith?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Along with that, I'd like to request your permission to post for an account clerk one or two in my office.
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we go to number five.
I'll make just one statement. We are, are trying to promote a patrol officer up to sergeant and they have to take a test and the test results are not backed whilst you had an empty blank, uh, form in your packet. And we thought we'd have those back today, but they're not back and they're expecting those back, uh, at the end. The person, when, when you do a test like that and everything, the person with the highest score, uh, gets, gets the position, so. But we're not ready to name that yet, so we'll bring it up next meeting and hopefully that'll be filled.
Okay. Number five, set dates and times for Halloween trick or treat and community Halloween party at the ice rink.
Yes, some reason, every, every time we have the jubilee parade about the next day or two, people start calling up and asking us, uh, when will trick or treat be? And, uh, I don't know whether they're making their calendars and I know Dan likes to have it on the, on the calendar that's, uh, for the chamber, they're, they're making their annual calendar for, for whatever, or it's been on there. But, uh, our traditional time to have that is a Saturday before Halloween and Halloween falls on October thirty-first on a Monday, so we're asking that trick or treat be set on Saturday, October twenty-ninth. And when we do that, the day in the, or the park, uh, have in the ice rink a, uh, program for the kids from three to five. And then, uh, trick or treat is from six to seven-thirty then following, so asking for the board to approve September or October twenty-ninth and then six to seven-thirty would be the door-to-door trick or treat. The time, that's before the time changes too, so it's still light out there at that time.
I move that we approve. Second?
Rick?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, next we have a resolution. So Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number nineteen, two thousand sixteen. A resolution providing for an inter-fund cash advance. This is a request for an advance from the one percent income tax fund to the two-twenty-two probation grant fund for fiscal year two thousand seventeen of fifteen thousand dollars. This amount will be reimbursed by the state of Ohio.
This is an annual thing, is it?
It is.
Comes over here.
I move we accept this.
I'll second. Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes. All righty, and, uh, next we have an ordinance, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
That was, we should've suspended that. Make a motion, we should have, right?
Okay.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Uh, next is an ordinance, so Lori, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand sixteen. An ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the two-twenty-two probation grant fund, um, again, which will become, uh, due effective July first through June thirtieth of this year. Um, it's for wages, their payers, workers' count, Medicare, office supplies and professional services. Total amount of appropriation requested, one hundred forty-one thousand two hundred eighty-one dollars.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend.
I will make a motion to suspend.
Second?
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes. Okay, that's all I show on the agenda for tonight, so I'll go around the table. Chief Siders, you have anything to add?
Um, council was given a copy of a letter that, uh, we received last week, uh, last September, uh, the insurance services organization was in to grade the fire department and they graded the communication system, uh, that we have, the nine-on-one system in, at the police department, they graded the fire department and they graded the water department. Uh, with that grading, uh, scheduled, we were able to maintain our class-three ISO rating. We actually missed going to a class-two by three tenths of a point, so we've got some things to work on, yeah. We've got some goals to work towards, uh, but we were able to successfully continue with our class-three ISO rating. I wanted to make council aware of that.
That, that kinda explains that ISO stands for International Organization for Standardization. It seems like it should be a I-O-S rather than I-S-O, but that's what that stands for. How, how high did you say the highest, or the worst you could get is a?
Is a ten.
Is a ten.
Yeah. The best you can get is a one.
One. That kinda explains, we've been, we've been at three for?
For quite a while. Actually, our points this grading period went up. We went from a seventy-one point four eight to a seventy-nine point nine five, I believe.
Congratulations.
Actually, I can, I can tell you what it is. Soon as I find the page I want.
That keeps everyone's property tax, property insurance down, correct?
Right. Right. That helps with all the insurances for not only residential, but also for, um, we went to a seventy-nine point seven one. That also helps the industry as well, keeps their insurance ratings low, so. Just wanna make council aware of that. We were able to maintain our class-three.
Thank you.
Good, good deal.
Okay, Mr. Long, anything from BMU?
Well, you know, we're going through a trying time right now.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the support that has come to being with the council. We'll get through this.
Okay, good, sounds good. Uh, Judy?
Just, uh, letting Kay know we're gonna miss her terribly and all her expertise and we'll be sad to see her go.
Carrie?
I would like to echo that. Um, enjoy your retirement, Kay. I hope that she can find some fun things to do. Um, I'd also like to say that I will miss Brian Carlin at BMU also. He's been an asset to the city and I wish him well in his endeavors.
Rick?
I just wanted to commend, uh, police and fire and everybody involved with traffic control during the fireworks. Uh, it seemed to, from, to my knowledge, no serious incidents and, uh, uh, things seemed to move out pretty quickly and I commend you on that.
Keith?
Well, I just wanna tell Kay, thank you again and, uh, and also to Brian Carlin, good luck and, uh, appreciate everything that these people do for us. Our, our, that city doesn't go without them, so we hopefully can find good replacements, I hope. Okay.
I'll echo that as well. Two very good people, uh, great assets to Bryan and, uh, miss both of them. Been very helpful and dedicated to the citizens of Bryan. Mayor? Or, I'm sorry, Lori?
I do need council to approve resolution nineteen.
Oh, you do?
I do.
Okay, all right.
I make a motion that we approve resolution nineteen.
Okay.
Second?
Carrie?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Lori?
I just, I'm gonna miss Brian and Kay both more than you can imagine. Both of them have very much impacted our office as well as the city, but they've both been a pleasure to work with.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yeah, I'll echo that too. Both of Bryan and Kay have moved the city forward in directions that we wanted to go and we wish them the best in their retirement and also Bryan in his new position. I was at the BMU earlier tonight and the echo was the same, uh, from that particular, from the board. Uh, received, uh, a good news, uh, Tyson sent me later, or, or later this afternoon that our winter salt contract come in from, uh, Old Dot and, uh, there, the prices are lower than they were last year, so that's a good thing, uh, to kinda keep you, mind up. The whole state is in there and what companies bid on the different parts of state, I don't know how they choose what to bid on, but that's how they come in. And, uh, last year, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, our price was fifty-five eighty-six per ton and this year it's fifty-two ninety-six ton. And, uh, your resolution was to, uh, uh, bid for five hundred ton, which it cost us around twenty-six thousand four eighty. We could buy, uh, over that, we could buy, um, five, five hundred fifty ton for twenty-nine thousand, or we have, we at least have to take a minimum for twenty-three thousand eight thirty-two. Uh, we have six hundred ton in the barn right now and other three hundred ton stored in the colony, so this should give us a, a nice amount of salt for the winter to come and it would also, uh, be great for our budgeting pr- projects. We'll know how much to put in the budget for, for salt. We, we won't be right at that amount, we'll be over in case we would have to go out and buy more, but the, the prices have come down considerably what they used to be, so.
Judy, is that it?
Question, just, that's it?
Okay, all right. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Second? Keith?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, thank you.